All right, we'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the April 1 Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. My name is Kevin Cook, I serve as the Chair this year. Joining me today is Commissioner Aaron Mays. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Bill Rippon, good morning.
Good morning.
Our county councillor Rich Eckert is here as well, good morning.
Good morning.
So today, we are going to be honoring a whole host of Shawnee County employees, past and present. And that is no joke on an April Fool's Day meeting. So, I'm gonna turn this over to Angela to kind of get us started. We want to thank everybody for being here, this is a great deal, this is not something we've done in several years. And so glad that we can get this started back up again. Angela, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, we'll have kind of people get in place right now. As they call your name, you'll come up, you'll receive your award, and there'll be pictures with the commissioners. So if we could ask you guys to come up, we've got places for you to stand up here.
Probably marked it out even.
Yep.
So, we're going to begin this morning with honoring everybody that has been here five years. So, we're recognizing milestone anniversaries, those five, ten, fifteen, you know, and so forth and so on. And then our special honor at the end will be directed towards those that have retired from Shawnee County in the first quarter of 2024. As your name is called, as Angela mentioned, please come down. We have a certificate for the five, ten, fifteen-year awardees. Roxy Shepherd, working with the Appraisers Office, has five years. Caitlin Ross, with the Department of Corrections. Chelsea Franken, again with Corrections, five years. Tim Loren, Parks and Rec, five years. With the Sheriff's Office, Olivia Gregg, five years. Logan Stoddard, with the Sheriff's Office, five years. Luke Williams, with the Sheriff's Office, five years. Justin Drake, with the Sheriff's Office, five years. Melissa Aide, with the Sheriff's Office, five years. And Tracy Striplin, with the Sheriff's, or I'm sorry, with the Solid Waste Department, five years. Next, we'll move on to our 10 years of service employees. Aaron Nickel with...
We're gonna do a group photo.
I had an arrow on one. And it's actually not a five-year total, but we've discussed this at length. Commissioner Bill Rippon has been now here a second time for a total of five years. But in our preparations and pre-discussions, he said by the time he has served all of his time, it'll been over forty years?
It'll be forty years.
Forty years exactly. All right. All right, moving to the 10 years of service. First on the list with the Department of Corrections, Aaron Nickel. Also with the Department of Corrections, Laura Bryan. And then 10 years with the Solid Waste Department, Terrence Carter. All right, moving along the milestones, we're now recognizing those with 15 years of service. Janon Arme. With Parks and Rec, 15 years, Kaleigh Husky. Also, with Parks and Recreation, Mike Coe. With the Public Works Department, Jerry King. With our Registered Deeds Office, Vonda Bridges. And with our Sheriff's Office, 15 years of service, Jesse Julian. So those are all of the service awards, five, ten, and 15 years. So for our milestone anniversaries of 20, 25, 30, and 35 years, I'd like to invite the department heads and the elected officials of those departments that have employees with those milestones to the podium. Beginning first with Bill Sutton with the Solid Waste Department.
Eddie Spencer, he is my Household Hazardous Waste Manager. He was hired on back in 1999. Had a short stint as a driver, and then he became the actual manager for the Household Hazardous Waste Facility. He left there, had a quick break, went over to Parks and Rec for about a few years, and then re-came back with the Solid Waste Department in 2010, where he has been there ever since. The Household Hazardous Waste Department, if you've never been out there, it receives allocates across the state, and they are held as one of the examples of those facilities that the standard he has set for us. So, he is not here today, he is actually on vacation, bless his heart. So I am accepting it on his behalf, and we'll be sure to give it to him.
Okay, and at this time, again, I have Steve Fallon from the Appraisers Office.
Good morning. I'm here today to recognize Bonnie Zlocken for her 32 years of service to the citizens of Shawnee County. It's 32 because she started as a temporary employee back in 1992, working the customer service counter in the personal property section. She decided to join our work family full-time two years later. Only those that worked at the courthouse 30-plus years ago and visited courthouse back then will remember that the Appraisers Office was directly across the hall from the Treasurer's Office. Part of the department had been moved out, but we still had 35 employees that we needed to find a space for. So we had to get creative. Bonnie had her own office, however, we called it the vault. Mainly because it was an old vault that we stuck her in. And fortunately for us, no one shut the door on her because we didn't have the combination. She started back when we were working on the old green screen monitors and printed documents on all those dot matrix printers with the big green bar paper, had a giant file room that we used to file those in. She was willing to help us maneuver through all of those changes in technology, and we really appreciate that. She has also been involved in raising funds for Project Pika. She had award-winning showgoats that she would coordinate a goat milking contest with the county commissioners. She's provided a lot of entertainment, as well as some much-needed funds for a good cause. Maybe we can get that going again. I would like to thank you Bonnie, for all your hard work over the years, your dedication to the job, to see that you did a great job was always evident, and it's much appreciated. So, thank you and congratulations.
Next, I'd like to invite Sheriff Hill to the podium, where he would recognize four of his employees for their milestones.
Good morning. I will start with retired Sergeant Andrew Dale. Would you like to come up? Oh, separately, okay, well, I will move on. Sergeant Glenn Hawkes is a sergeant with us. Glenn has served the citizens of Shawnee County since March of 1999. Glenn's worked at the courthouse security in patrol, he was on the ATF Task Force, he was part of our SWAT team. Glenn is currently in the Drug Enforcement Unit and serves as the sergeant there. Glenn has done field training, patrol duties. He's filled capacities in the Detective Division, and I think Glenn is camera shy, although he is here today as a part of our Narcotics Unit. So I will be happy to pick up his award for him today. So, thank you Glenn for your service. Corporal Jim Ward has been serving the citizens of Shawnee County since February of 99. He's worked in the Uniform Patrol Division. He's worked in the Fugitive Warrants Unit, promoted to the rank of corporal this past September. Jim has worked as a TASER instructor for our agency, and he is currently one of our firearms instructors. And we'd like to thank him for his service, and I don't believe Jim is here this morning, so. And Major Danny Lottridge, who is here this morning. Began his career with Sheriff's Office in March of 99. During his time as deputy, Danny served on the patrol and the narcotics unit. He was the task force representative for the Sheriff's Office, promoted to corporal in 2007. He later was promoted to sergeant that year. Danny was promoted to lieutenant in 2011. Worked second shift patrol, he was a field training coordinator, special events coordinator. In 2015, transferred to the Executive Lieutenants and Professional Standards Unit for the Sheriff's Office. And then in 2017, he was promoted to captain of operations. And in 2020, he was promoted to the major of Shawnee County Sheriff's Office. Thank you for your service. And finally, Lieutenant Rob Child. He began his career with Shawnee County Sheriff's Office in 1994. In 98, he was promoted to the rank of corporal. Rob was promoted to sergeant in November of 2015. He spent his time in Uniform Service Division. In 2019, Rob was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, where he served in Operations Division since then. Rob is a current firearms instructor, firearms armor, and previously he was a Special Weapons and Tactics on our SWAT team as a team leader. So, I want to thank Rob for his service.
All right, if I can have the Director of IT, Mark Price.
Morning. I'm here to recognize two of my employees. First off, I'd like to recognize Lee Sykes. He started with the IT Department in 2004. And over the past 20 years, he has had a very strong commitment to Shawnee County and his personal and professional growth. He is a gamer who loves facing new levels and is always welcomed to every challenge as an opportunity to learn and improve. In the numerous challenges that we've confronted as an IT department, he has been the go-to person for resolving many of those problems. And has earned the title of Lee the Man, through his exceptional dedication and resourcefulness. Lee's approach to challenges is seamless and sets a high standard. Beyond the office, you can often find him, walk around Lake Shawnee. If you go out there about any afternoon, you will see him wandering. I think it's because he's trying to get exercise in, not just lost. He does a lot to try to do a work-life balance, and he loves going out and eating Indian food and gaming. Lee, it's been a pleasure for you working here. Secondly, I'd like to recognize Shane Clemmons. Shane started in January of 99, about seven months before I started working at the county. Shane actually had a really interesting start. He went through three directors, I think, in the first about two months of his employment. Well, before employment and through employment, he had three directors in his position. He started as a second shift operator. He was the one who was supporting all the green screens and doing all the paper reports that Steve got to deal with. Since then, he's grown his career here as well as his family. Probably a little more personal than Lee, but Shane's one of the guys who we all hired on here about the same time, got married within months of each other, and had kids, within some of them even months of each other also. He's got two wonderful daughters, one who's getting ready to graduate from Forte State. He's, in his time here at Shawnee County, he has gone through many accounting systems. He's integral in getting to Finance Enterprise that we have today, moving from our old mainframe system to Finance Enterprise, does great work with every department. Without him, we probably wouldn't get paid half the time. It's been a tough 25 years for him, because if you don't know, he has taken to running. And it was, been so bad, he will go out and run for hours and hours, in fact, days. I think he's 200 milers, you finished, or three?
Three.
He's finished 300 milers, and that is all at one time. Multiple 50s, marathons, half marathons. As working with him with 25 years, he's become a great friend, and he is a great asset to the county.
Last to acknowledge our milestone anniversaries, if I can have Brian Hill come to the podium.
Good morning. First, I'd like to recognize for 25 years Craig Roberts. Started right before I was promoted to captain. Craig and I have seen a lot. Craig's work came in on as a corrections specialist, and Craig has worked virtually every shift in the jail. He's been a leader among his peers. Craig has worked a great deal of training staff in firearms and been involved in the mentorship of a lot of staff that have been at the jail. And as anybody knows, you know, we've had tough times when it came to hiring, and Craig was very instrumental in helping us to retain. To talk about what was good about working for Shawnee County and what was good about working at the Department of Corrections. Craig has trained many people, but I'd like to recognize Craig mostly not only for his dedication and his years of service overall for Corrections, is his ability to step up during court. Craig has worked a great deal in court transport, and when we went through some tremendous staffing areas over there, we lost the sergeant, had to bring them back to the main operation. And Craig was a unanimous decision, choice among his peers to become the new corporal in transport. And that is something the first time we've ever had in transport at the Department of Corrections. Craig has built and maintained some tremendous relationships with the courts, the AAs, the attorneys. Not only will he never compromise the integrity of the safety and security, he ensures the integrity of the case. He often has to remind staff the right way to do things when it comes to making sure that our staff are properly dressed for court. But the bigger, the big deal is, is that for me, I get pulled in a lot of different directions. Craig takes a lot of heat for the jail. When we do get it, not very often, when it comes to the courts. They reach to him before they reach to me, and there's a good reason why. He does the job. He knows the job inside and out, and the courts rely on him greatly. Craig will call me and say, hey Brian, we had this at the court, it's taken care of. I'll get an email from judges every month. We had this problem come up, Craig and the staff over there took care of it. So Craig, your 25 years have been tremendous at Shawnee County. You're a leader, you're a friend, and you set a tremendous example for everybody, and congratulations. Rhonda? Now this is a tough one for me. Rhonda started on the first month, in the first month of 89, and I was hired in the last month of 89. So rest Rhonda has been at the Department of Corrections longer than I have, as far as just several months. Rhonda, don't be surprised by her small stature. Rhonda can handle anything that has been given to her. Rhonda was instrumental in setting up our female module. Many years ago, when I got hired, that was her module. That was who Rhonda took care of, was she ran the female portion of the jail. At that time, we had about six to 10 inmates at that time, now we have about 80, and Rhonda still stays on top of that. Rhonda has been instrumental in leading, not only training me in certain areas, training tremendous staff at the jail. She is our trainer when it comes to booking. Anybody that comes in new, she trains. And Rhonda's tough. You gotta be tough when you're doing the booking area, understanding the probable cause to detain, what it takes to get people in and out of the jail, staying on top of getting people in and out. Rhonda has a very tough job. Not only that, she's a offender register person at the jail, she's the one to enter stuff into the computer. Rhonda has worked, and I want to say thank you to Brian Hill and the staff, the sheriff, including her, when it comes to training. And with our offender registration, we have a tremendous relationship with the Sheriff's Office, and we're a better agency because of that relationship. But Rhonda has done it all. Rhonda is able to be a mentor. She is now a sergeant over our classification unit. She's there, we always talk about when are you going to retire, and we always look at each other, we say, we don't know. Rhonda and I have seen, Craig and I have seen a lot, Rhonda and I have seen more. We've been through the thick and thin of the jail, when at times the jail was not seen good light in the community. Rhonda weathered, when we've gone through changes at the jail, and new directors and things like that, Rhonda has been loyal. And Rhonda has always been dedicated and loyal to me. Rhonda doesn't work for me, she works with me, in fact, I work for her. Rhonda keeps us out of trouble in classification, and we know it can be tough down in classification. Rhonda's not one for big accolades, she doesn't like those kind of things, she always tells me those kind of things, but Rhonda is very tough. Rhonda, I wouldn't be where I'm at today if it wasn't for you, and Craig, and all of the staff that we're recognizing. So Rhonda, with that, congratulations, 35 years, that's good.
So that concludes the milestone anniversary part of our recognition. Finally, last, we'd like to recognize the retirees that have retired in the months of January, February, and March of this year. So, at that time, Bill Sutton, can you come back to the podium?
I'd like to recognize the service in retirement of Victor Coche. Mr. Coche started his career with Shawnee County Solid Waste back in 2002, and he was a welder for his entire 21 years of service to the county. He was very good at his job, and he always had a smile on his face. And he loved his horses, in fact, that's probably where he's at today, is taking care of his horses out there on his farm and marry them. So Victor, I know you're probably not watching this, but I will get this to you, and thank you for your service and your hard work.
Teresa Fisher with the Health Department, also has a retiree.
Thank you. I'm happy to be able to recognize Marvina Griffin. Marvina spent 17 years as a registered nurse for the Shawnee County Health Department. She joined us in May of 2006, and she just recently retired at the end of December of '23. Her career spanned different areas in the Health Department. She worked in our STI program, she worked in our TB program, and our infectious disease program. Her years of experience provided her with immense knowledge, and she willingly shared that with patients and among other staff members. She was able to build trust and rapport with the people that she served, and had great working relationships with our community partners. She was known for her calm and even temperament, even with dealing with tough situations, including the COVID-19 pandemic. During the pandemic, Marvina is the one who really kept our clinic running, while others were dedicated and turning their attention to the pandemic response. She continued to provide our routine services with very limited... While others were dedicated and turning their attention to the pandemic response, she continued to provide our routine services with very limited support. Marvina, we can't say thank you enough for your 17 years of service to public health and to the county. And we wish you nothing but success and happiness in retirement. Thank you.
Sheriff Hill? I know you started, but now you get to finish.
All right.
All right, now for Sergeant Andy Dale. Andy started his career at Sheriff's Office in 1996. Andy's always been a leader there. I've known Andy for several years before I came over to the Sheriff's Office from the Police Department side. Andy was in the Patrol Division. He made it to the K-9 Division where he worked for several years. Andy was on our SWAT team at Sheriff's Office where he was a leader. And I know a lot of the men looked to him for solutions to problems. Andy was promoted to Detective. He was the Detective Sergeant for several years. Andy oversaw several major cases for the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office. And Andy ended up his career in the Process Division, overseeing that. So, thank you for your service, Andy. The Sheriff's Office does have two other retirees who were not able to be in attendance. Would you like to say anything for those retirees? Edward Nelson and Brian Rodd. Both these individuals worked for the Sheriff's Office. And you have, excuse me, I don't have their years of service written down here. I know Brian Rodd was our Interdiction Officer and he worked for multiple years. Brian was such a good Interdiction Officer that he was sought throughout the state, the Kansas Narcotics Officers Association. He recently retired and he was kind enough to do some training before he left, to put us on the right track, to keep in those operations going. And Major, you can step up here for Nelson. I know that you knew him very well.
Sure. So Ed Nelson, I don't know what year he started.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six? Okay. He served in our Patrol Division for a long time. Was a very solid officer, was a field training officer. And then probably three quarters of the way through his career, he transitioned over to our Process Division. He had a very successful career with us and we hope that he's doing well in retirement.
Brian, can you tell me, you have a retiree to honor this morning?
Good morning. Again, Eve. Eve's been with me for the thick and thick of it. She started right after I did and worked along with Rhonda and being trained. It's tough, you know, I've talked a lot about Eve, even since she's been gone, meaning we miss her. Eve has worked, came on right after I did as a corrections specialist. She worked hard and diligently and then continued to move up the ranks. Rhonda had, or excuse me, Eve has been involved in both the juvenile and the adult. She's been over our physical, she's been over everything. She is the one who is, a lot of times, had to keep me on the right track. She has been over our budget. And not only has she been so involved in things at the jail, it's the things for the community. She's been involved in many boards and committees outside the jail, which I think is something very important so people understand what we do. She's worked and ran United Way for Shawnee County. Simply Eve has done it all in her career. For 34 years, I know Eve has hit the ground running, that she's already been many trips camping. And I just texted her the other day and just to see, we talked about how everybody was doing and things like that. Eve, you have been missed. We miss you, we love you. Eve, you know, she is a mentor, she is a good colleague, and she is a tremendous friend. And like I said, I can say this about Rhonda, I've been with both of them women longer than I have my wife. They've been married and they have, everybody knows you have to keep me out of trouble. And the staff I have and that work with me, that they do that. So Eve, I love you, you know I do. And congratulations and a well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
So, we have three retirees that were not able to be in attendance today at the end here. However, I'd still would like to invite the elected officials and the department heads of those employees and retirees to the podium to say a little bit about each of their service, starting with Treasurer Ma.
Good morning. I'm here to recognize Lisa Moore. Lisa started with the Treasurer's Department in 1988. And after almost 36 years of service, she'll be retiring. Started out as a clerk. For about 15 years of that, she was our Quality Assurance and Trainer in the Motor Vehicle Department. And in the last five years, she has been the manager out at the annex. If you know any of the history of the Treasurer's Department, you know that we've had colorful times, to say the least, at the Treasurer's Department. Lisa managed to go through the changeover of three different Treasurers, including myself. She also managed to survive our motor vehicle program upgrade in 2012. When I joined the department in 2012, she was my go-to person. If I really wanted to know how things should be done and what regulations were in place, Lisa was the one to go to. And she's going to retire to spend more time with her family. She couldn't be here today because she is with her family, she's going to take time off to travel. And then I think she has a part-time job with a friend in mind. So Lisa, thank you for your service and welcome to retirement.
So Parks and Rec had a recent retiree, so Tim Laurent, can you come and say some words?
Mike McLaughlin. He was our Communications and Public Information Supervisor. And Mike was obviously here when I started. And, you know, he was tremendous at what he did. He did a great, he was very professional and I think, but I think the thing that I take away from my brief five years with Mike was how much he cared about the county and how much he cared about our department. So he was, Brian mentioned, trying to keep Brian out of trouble. You know, I think Mike was trying to do that for our entire department. He really did care about what people thought about Parks and Recreation and wanted to get the word out about all the good things that we were doing. So for that, I'll always be grateful to Mike. And he was a tremendous help to me as a new director, kind of showing me the ropes on how to deal with the Eric Ives of the world. So it was, he was a great asset and we've hired a replacement, but I don't know that we'll ever fill Mike's shoes. Thank you.
I'd like to invite from the Audit Finance Department, Jennifer Sauer to the podium. In standing in for Jennifer Sauer would be Angela Lewis.
Good morning. I'm sorry Jennifer couldn't be here this morning, but she did leave her comments. She said Betty Greiner served as the Director of Administrative Services for 11 years, guiding the county in the right fiscal direction during her tenure. She spearheaded projects while serving the county, including implementing the county's fraud balance policy and the five-year capital improvement program. She was and is an invaluable mentor and friend to not only Jennifer, but to me. I am happy to report that she's made great use of her retirement to date. She's moved to the greater Chicago area to spend time with her grandchild and is vacationing with friends. That concludes our recognition service, but I know that we have to adjourn with the commissioners.
First off, Commissioner Mason, anything you want to add?
I think this is just a lot of fun, number one. I think since I've been here, this is the first time we've done anything like this. I've been almost five years now. I think it's just a testament to, you know, how dedicated our employees are that we can have this many people and then all of these that weren't actually here today. And we're going to be doing this quarterly, so I mean, we expect more and more of these. It's going to be a lot of fun to see some of the faces that we don't typically get to see all the time. You know, we have people that come to our meetings every week that we know really well, but we know that there are also another thousand employees out there that we don't get to see on a regular basis. So it's kind of neat for all of you to be here because, you know, that's how we get to know everybody. So, congratulations everybody, thank you for your service.
Commissioner Rippon?
Yeah, he's not stood at all. I would like to thank everybody for their time, their commitment, and their service to Shawnee County. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I just can't say enough for, you know, I go to bed and I'm not worrying because I know we have great staff and people that carry on 24/7. And we have very good customer service. You hardly ever hear anything bad about a county employee. And that speaks highly of all of you, department heads too, doing a good job of training and keeping your staff online. Very good, thank you.
You know, when we do opening comments to new employees, we kind of get into a routine where you're saying really about the same thing to each new group that's coming in. But one of the things that I will often say to new employees is, we are in the business of serving the public. That's what we do. At Shawnee County, it's about serving the public, making your community a little bit better than what you found it the day before. All of you are a testament to that. Whether you've been with the county for five years or 35 years, or retired, your retired career, we know that you have served the public and you made Shawnee County a better place to be and a better place to live. And so we wanted to thank you for this. So to all of you, congratulations and thank you.
Before we adjourn, are there any public comments? All right, with none of those, then we are adjourned. I think there might be some refreshments right in the entryway, so please help yourselves and please thank you very much.